Hello, everybody. This is Anne Luther with the League of Women Voters. Thank you for joining us tonight for our candidate forum for County Commissioner District Three. Very pleased that you were able to join us. We're going to be conducting this forum on Zoom. You will be able to ask questions through the Q and A box at the bottom of your Zoom format. The chat will be disabled. I'm going to introduce the moderators here in a minute, and the moderators will introduce the ground rules for the forum tonight and the candidates. But before we start, I just want to thank the candidates for agreeing to participate tonight, for their willingness to run for office and do the public service if elected. We really appreciate your civic mindedness and your community spirit. So with that, let me introduce our moderators. Faith Dambros is the managing editor of the Mount Desert Islander and an award-winning journalist in her own right. And Muzuki Fujiwara is an organizer for Just Me, For Just Us, which is a rural youth organizing group that encourages young people to get involved in the issues that matter to them in their communities. Thank you both for your moderation. And Faith, I think I'll turn it over to you.
Sure. Thank you, Anne, and thank you for everyone for participating. We'll get right down to business, so we have plenty of time to get to questions. So I'm going to introduce the candidates, and then we will go in alternating order with the questions. So Samuel DeBella, Samuel's mother was born in Franklin, and he spent all of his summers here in the area. As an adult, he moved to Franklin where he ran a car repair garage. He then moved to Connecticut where he worked in home remodeling and raised a family. He is a member of the Hancock County, the Hancock Community Garden where he installed the watering system. He's on the Hancock Select Board. He was Chair of the Building Committee for the Future Firehouse, and he's on the Hancock County Budget Advisory Committee. That's Samuel. Paul Parity has lived in Bar Harbor since 1972. He is the second generation owner and president of Parity's Ace Hardware in Bar Harbor, a family-operated business that was founded in 1972 by Paul's parents. The business currently employs fifteen long-term local team members. Paul graduated from Mount Desert Island High School in 1983, is a U.S. Coast Guard aviation veteran, and has a business degree, a degree in Business Administration with a concentration in finance from Babson College. Paul is currently serving his first term as a Hancock County Commissioner representing District Three. Prior to that, he served on the Bar Harbor Town Council for thirteen years, including three as the Board Chair.
We would like to start with the opening remarks of Paul. Can you start, Paul, please?
Sure. I think it's important to state what District Three is. Basically Franklin, well, it is Franklin, Hancock, LaMoyne, Trenton, Bar Harbor, Mount Desert, Trenton, South West Tower, Granby, House, Swans Island, and Frenchboro. So it's quite a diverse district. Elections are about picking the right person to represent you, not about picking a member of a political party to do so. Property taxes are rising throughout Hancock County as municipalities struggle to provide services. Living and working in Hancock County is getting increasingly expensive. We need to elect folks that understand that. We need to elect folks that will work hard to responsibly combat that problem. I served thirteen years on the Hancock, excuse me, on Bar Harbor Town Council, as Ben mentioned, and I fully understand the financial impact that decisions made at the county level affect municipal budgets and ultimately property taxes. Last four years has also taught me just how different county government is than municipal government. County responsibilities are vastly different than those of municipalities, with many county responsibilities coming in the form of mandates from the state of Maine. Many of them very, very costly. There's a steep learning curve to this job. County government is very unique. It's not rocket science, but it does require the ability to show up, respectfully work with others, make decisions that may not always be welcomed by those in front of you at the time. I work hard to understand the role of county government and all the intricacies outlined in main statute. Sometimes that involves recognizing what that role is not, and that we simply can't afford to assume new roles or projects. There is a balancing act, and as a county, we must ensure we don't further burden municipalities and dip further into an environment where folks simply can't live and do business here in Hancock County. And again, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters down east and all the co-sponsors for hosting this forum. I think it's a wonderful thing. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Could you state your opening remarks, Samuel?
Yes. My name is Sam DeBella, as been stated. Lived most of my life in Connecticut, where I worked in remodeling. And coming from a city in Connecticut, being in government didn't really lend itself as it does here with local government. So when I moved to Hancock seven years ago, I was asked to run for Select Board. And it was an eye-opener for me because just living in the town really doesn't, you don't know anything what's going on in the town, just living in a town. So being on the Select Board, you learn a lot about the town, which is what I did. And then after a few years, I was asked to run for Budget Advisory with the county. County and municipals are hand in hand because we support the commissioners and the things that they do. And so it's important to to have an idea of what's going on with the commissioners from a municipality point of view. So being on the Budget Advisory, this would be my second year, I decided to run for Commissioner. And I realize that it's going to be a learning curve. There's no doubt about it. But I think I can handle it. And that's where we stand right now. That's where I stand.
Thank you so much. Then we would like to start asking our questions. The first one is, what should be the county's role in addressing regional problems like ambulance services, solid waste management, and animal control? Could you start answering Paul first?
No, Samuel goes first, sorry. Paul went first last time, now Samuel goes first this time. It's okay.
Okay, we could start with animal control, which is an issue that's been dealt with. It's actually, it's actually part of the county. And it's a voluntary thing with, well, we have a animal control person for that county, and towns can opt in on that and pay a portion of the bill based on, I think it's per capita. And so that issue is pretty much taken care of. I mean, we needed an animal control person, and it was by volunteer in Hancock, and now we have an official animal control person. What was your second question? What was the second part of that question? Ambulance service? I think ambulance service, I think, would be better left to individual towns decide on how they want to get together on that. I know in Hancock, we've been discussing the fact that maybe Northern Light would pull out of the ambulance business. We'd have to join up with a couple of the towns in our area. And in building a firehouse, we've decided that we would add on to the firehouse for sleeping quarters and possibly office for EMTs in case we do have to have an ambulance service because they would have to be on 24/7. So I think locally, it seems to work better. Your third part of that question, if you could remind me what that is?
Yeah, solid waste management and you already mentioned animal control, but yeah, yeah.
Sure. Waste management. I would propose that we do it by district. That towns, and this could be facilitated by the commissioners, would get together in different districts to deal with their refuge. And this wouldn't cost the county any money. We would, as commissioners, we would just facilitate the meetings of the towns and help them with organizing themselves to deal with the trash. And that might also
Samuel.
Sorry.
That's okay.
You all set for me?
Yeah, go, Paul.
Okay. In actuality, the county plays very little role, very little in these roles, with the exception of unorganized territories. Those roles are relegated to the municipalities by statute, state statute in most instances. Well, that said, there are instances when the county is in a position to help provide those services to municipalities, wishing a contract with the county to provide them. As has been mentioned, the advent of the Hancock County Regional Animal Control Officer is a perfect example. Here municipalities can contract with the county for services, while those that do not need those services are not financially penalized for subsidizing those that do. Ambulance service is one that's been explored and found not to be financially or, most importantly, operationally feasible at county level. In other words, it's more cost and operationally effective for municipalities to either provide those services on their own or contract with area providers. The same really goes for solid waste management. You know, the county would certainly entertain, you know, jumping in or helping with that, but you know, so far, just early preliminary discussions have, you know, really turned up that it's not financially or operationally feasible.
Okay, thank you, Paul and Samuel, for those first questions. Sorry to interrupt you there. All right, now the question about police of the sheriff's office. The question is, what does the public expect from the sheriff's office? And does the office have sufficient resources to meet those expectations? And to you, Paul, first. And you are muted, Paul.
Sorry about that. The expectations of the sheriff's office are vast and complicated. They're the primary public safety agencies in many smaller municipalities, while serving as a secondary agency in larger communities that have a contract with other agencies. In all cases, the expectation is of a professional and well-trained agency. For the question of whether they have the resources to meet those expectations, for me, yes, they do. The American Rescue Plan funds have made possible to help modernize and equip sheriff's office personnel without financially impacting municipalities in these last three years. This includes vehicles, personal protection, non-lethal weapons, as well as service weapons. This may be a financial challenge moving forward, but the county has worked hard to soften that blow with these funds. We've been very, we've been very lucky. There's always a question of additional personnel that must be weighed against being able to afford these costs. The sheriff's office in this budget year has requested two additional deputies, and those positions are currently making it through the budget process. Now, the more difficult portion of the sheriff's office question to address is the jail. With state mandated services required and the growth of jail budgets limited by statute, the county is in a constant state of having to choose between competing statutes. For instance, just to put this in perspective, if you were to go to jail today, your medical, mental, and prescription coverage would cease. And the county is mandated by state law to provide those services to you at county taxpayer expense. This is a significant expense. And since budget growth of the county jail is capped by law, capped by law, the county is faced with which statute do we ignore? Tough position. If we fail to fund and provide mental services, we face potential claims from inmates who need these services. And quite frankly, not having funds to provide these services is not a defense against these claims. So we're in a tough spot. Hopefully, we can address those in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Same question to you, Samuel. What does the public expect from the sheriff's office? And does the office have sufficient resources to meet those expectations?
Well, I think people expect crime prevention, maybe, you know, deal with crime if they've been violated in some way. Also, the the documents that have to go out to be signed. They're also in charge of the jails, as Paul has mentioned. Emergency situations, traffic control, there's a lot of things that the sheriffs do. As far as resources, we are required, we will be, I think, providing full-time mental health, full-time mental health professional to be on staff. And I think that it might help if some of the sheriff calls that they get might be addressed by a mental health professional if it indeed warrants that, which might help with the sheriff's department. Because it might not necessarily, might not be the first person you want to be confronting, somebody who's not quite right with a sheriff, and might be better off with a mental health professional. So I think that might help the sheriff's budget a little bit offload some of the workload that they have. And yeah, it's a tight budget with the sheriff. Resources are limited.
Thank you so much for answering the second question. And then we would like to move on to the third question, which is, how do you envision for the future of the current county-owned courthouse should the state judicial branch be located from its space? Could you start answering, Samuel?
Well, as the offices become vacant, I think the District Attorney could use the space, some of the spaces. There's also some of the other, there's another office that is sharing an office, so they can also have, they can also move into some of that space. And so the spaces will be useful for the town or for the county. And open spaces will be a big help for that.
Thank you so much. The same question for you, Paul, which is, how do you envision for the future of the current county-owned courthouse should the state judicial branch relocate from its space?
Well, it's not a matter of if the state judicial branch vacates, but it's a question of when. The main judicial branch has made it clear that they plan on leaving once they find and develop a suitable site. My understanding is that they have ruled out staying and improving where they are now, so it looks like they'll be vacated. Having said that, it's probably at least three to five years in the future, probably more. The commission has discussed reconfiguring the county operations within the courthouse once the space is vacated. This is a very, this is in its very preliminary stages, basically back of the napkin planning at this point. But one of the scenarios that has been discussed is expansion of the jail to house federal inmates. The initial thought is that the feds would pay for such an expansion. They do in other places, and they've communicated that they would here. And that federal inmate housing reimbursements would be a big help in the county's jail funding predicament. Again, very early back-of-the-napkin discussions, as the county has really no timeline from the main judicial branch for vacating, but just ideas that we're looking at to soften or help fund some of the operations that really are on the backs of municipalities now.
Great. Thank you, Paul. All right, so our next question.
Did Samuel answer that question?
I did.
What first?
Tape across my lips. I'll shut up.
No worries, no worries. This is the first one of the season. It's always a little. All right, so question four, we'll go to Paul first. So from policy decisions to fiscal operations, the state's county commissioners have a lot on their plate. Do you think a three-member board is the right number? And I guess why or why not?
Yes, I do. First of all, because that's what's in state statute, and it would take an act of the legislature to change, so difficult, her. The second reason I do is that getting folks to run for these seats has traditionally been difficult. I think expanding or increasing the number of districts would further complicate it, especially when you consider a district like District Three, which involves, you know, how would you split up or make District Three smaller when, you know, a large part of it is our islands and would have difficult coming to meetings or attending meetings? So I realize that state statute is very old as it relates to the number of commissioners, but I think it's worked, and I think expanding it would just be problematic.
Thank you. Samuel, the same question to you. From policy decisions to fiscal operations, the state's county commissioners have a lot on their plate. Do you think a three-member board is the right number, and why and why not?
Well, I do think that a bigger, a larger amount of commissioners, a larger board would be beneficial in some respects, but it would, it would be a bigger expense for the county or for the municipalities. And and so I I guess I, I guess I would say that the three are handling it for now, and I would leave it at that.
Thank you so much. The next question is, last year, the county budget generated a roughly $8.5 million tax bill that was divided up by the county's 37 municipalities. And this year, initial numbers show a double-digit increase. Are the contributing towns getting a good bang for their buck, and why or why not? Samuel, could you start answering?
Well, costs are rising. Everyone knows, even as an individual, people know that costs are up. And a big part of our budget now is because of the healthcare for the jail. And I think people get a pretty good, a pretty good deal because we are pretty budget-minded. I'm on the Budget Advisory Committee, and there's not a lot of disagreement on the budget. Couple of things come up. There might be a little bit of discussion, but most of the time, we're agreeing with the commissioners. So that bit of government work seems to work pretty well. So yeah, I think, I think people are getting their money's worth.
Thank you. The same question to Paul. Last year, the county budget generated a roughly $8.5 million tax bill that was divided up by the county's 37 municipalities. And this year, initial numbers show a double-digit increase. Are the contributing towns getting a good bang for their buck, and why or why not?
Well, put it in perspective, it is a double-digit increase this year, but it's, you know, hold on to your chairs, it's 35% as it stands right now. That's huge. A lot of it is driven by the jail, but a lot of it is wages and benefits and stay competitive. We're having to look at some of those. There are some, some big asks when it comes to that, and commissioners have to be fiscally responsible and be fair and ensure that what we're doing is getting, giving the municipalities a bang for their buck, you know? When you look at how the county is funded, basically, the commissioner, there's a budget process that's sort of been outlined by Sam. But whatever is decided by the commissioners is just assessed to the municipalities. So it's not like they have a lot of choice. So it's incumbent on, on the commissioners to ensure that municipalities are getting a bang for their buck. I think they are. But I think the commissioners need to work hard to, you know, trim things down and make sure that we're in line, make sure that we're not above the market, but we're with the market. And it's a tough balancing act, and I think we're working hard to accomplish that. But I don't want to sugarcoat this. It's a 35% increase as it stands now.
Thank you, Paul. Okay, so our next question. What is the most important service that county government provides? And Paul, you'll start this one off.
Well, the most important service actually differs by municipality. I think that one of the most essential services is the RCC or 911. That's more important to some municipalities than others. The larger municipalities, not so important, but vitally important to the smaller communities. Sheriff's Department is another one. Again, public safety in the smaller communities, and we've touched on that, is the sheriff's department is the, is the primary public safety agency. But there are a lot of mandated ones that are very important. Deeds, probate are functions that only the county does. The jail is another one. We've touched on some of the challenges there. So it's hard to pinpoint one, but I think that the, it's just tough to pinpoint one. I think it's in totality. I think that the county does a good job. We're all cognizant of, you know, a lot of the larger communities have have their own services, so we have to be fair and equitable among all communities. But you know, your question asked that I pick one, and that's very tough to do.
Well, thank you. Samuel, same question to you. What is the most important service that county government provides?
I have to agree with Paul. I mean, services are needed, and I don't think we are providing or the commissioners are providing anything that people really aren't dependent on. And I mean, I mean, how are you going to do away with deeds or, or anything else that, you know, the 911, I mean, that is county-run. It's, it may eventually end up that the emergency call goes to a municipality with those services, like a police, a police department. But the 911 part of it is run by the county, and you can't do without it. So I don't, I don't see where we, we could do away with any part of the budget. Services.
What I'm hearing is all the services are important, both of you.
I left out the airport. That's, you know, very vital, especially when we look at Hancock County. That's really the only viable airport in the county.
Thank you so much. We've got a question from the audience, which is to Paul. Paul mentioned the burden of Paul mentioned the burden of rising property taxes. What if anything would you try to do as a commissioner to rein in those increases for taxpayers?
Biggest thing is our, is the county budget. Um, you know, we have to. Make sure that we're, that as mentioned in a previous uh question. That the municipalities are uh getting the best bang for their buck. That means not providing services, uh, not providing services that aren't required. Uh, we were, so that's the number one thing is control our budget.
Would you like to mention something, Samuel? About this question?
Could you repeat the question?
Yeah, sorry. Um, what if anything would you try to do as a commissioner to rein in the, in those increases for taxpayers? Oh, uh, increases for taxpayers of the burden of rising property taxes.
Oh, being on the Budget Advisory Committee. Um, we, we are considering anything that we might be able to cut without actually being detrimental. The to the uh, to the county. So I I really don't see any area, I mean, we, when we start discussing the budget at these budget meetings. I mean, certainly we'll be looking at things that we might be able to cut or do differently. You know, maybe, you know, we use it instead of getting a new police car, maybe we may do with what we have. Or maybe some things can be in-house service, services which we contract out. I mean, little things like that can make a small difference, but pretty much that's what we do as at the budget advisory end of it.
All right, so let's, one more question before we wrap it up. Um, do you think county government should have more responsibility or less? Or is it just right? And this would go to Sam first.
Well, I'm, I think I'm in favor of dealing with the trash refuge. I think the town, the county could get involved with recycling, uh, something that a lot of people would like to see happen. Um, people just don't have places to get rid of their recyclables. And uh, and environmentally, that's, that's a problem. So I think the county could investigate that. I mean, people are dealing with recycling. I think it might be Lemoine that's actually got a recycling program. And I think if it's done on a grander scale versus each town, might be a little bit more to our advantage.
Okay, thank you. Um, Paul, same question to you. Do you think county government should have more responsibilities or less, or is it just right?
I think it's just right. Uh, I certainly don't feel it should be more. Uh, and it probably could be less. Uh. I'm for when the county can introduce efficiencies, animal control is is one of them and it's, it's working. It's a, it's a relatively new experiment and it is still an experiment at this stage, but it seems to be working from what, from what we can all see at this point. With that mean, assuming more responsibility would mean taking less, would be taking responsibility from, from. Member or county municipalities. And county municipalities are so diverse that it would be, it it would be hard to um. Come up with with a a service that would be equitable amongst all the communities. Um, Sol Waste is a perfect example, I think. Uh, you know, maybe there's some efficiencies that that uh could be gained, you know, by offering some services to smaller communities. But then, we have to make sure that that's not uh to the detriment of the larger communities, which. Seem to have good recycling programs that work. I know Bar Harbor does. I know that there's a a uh, the M D I disposal district um, does and it works. And we'd have to be cognizant that we don't, you know, put extra burden on those folks.
Thank you so much. If we don't have any questions more, we could go to the closing remarks. If you have any questions, please type into the Q and A function. Okay, we would like to move on to the closing remarks. Could you start yours, um, Samuel?
Well, I'd like to say that um, I think the county is doing a very good job at what they do. And um, I do think that there could be a little bit more balance there as far as um. Just opinions and judgments. Yeah, I'm just. Trying to bring a little bit of a different perspective into this, into this group, into the commissioners and uh. I think uh. I think there's, there's, I think there's room for more discussion and different points of view. And that's where I'm, and that's why I'm running. So, thank you for your vote, if you vote for me.
Thank you. Uh, what about yours, Paul?
Thanks again to all of you who made this forum possible. It's uh, it it's refreshing and nice to see. Um, and I really appreciate the opportunity to participate. Uh, I've worked uh to be civil and fair throughout my political career. First on the Bar Harbor Town Council and for the last four years on the Hancock County Commission. I maintain my composure and and respectfully work with others. Uh, I have a strong record of working to compromise to get a workable solution that we can responsibly afford. Uh, at all levels of government, we're in dire need of elected officials who understand that teamwork is how we get things done. It's really the only way that we're going to tackle, solve and afford problems, uh, our problems and their solutions. That means electing officials who can have the experience and the will to work with others. Uh, my experiences, young man in the Coast Guard, as a town counselor, as an owner of a small family business. And now as a county commissioner have all taught me that working with others as a team is how you get things done. I love to involve others and I absolutely love to work with others as part of a team. Again, how you get things done. Thank you, and I ask for your vote for District Three County Commission. Thank you.
Thank you all so much. Thank you to our moderator, moderators tonight, Faith, Deambrose and Mizuki Fujiwara. And thanks to our candidates, Paul Parry and Samuel Di Bella. Thank you for participating. Thank you to our audience for jumping on. We will be posting the video archive to this within a few minutes of the closing this evening. Um, thanks to everyone. Good luck in the election and we'll see you later.